Okay, Mr. Mayor.
This is a special meeting of the Town Council, Town in North Branford, on Tuesday, June 29, 2021, at 6:35 PM in the Town Council chambers. We can start this with a salute to the flag, please.
Let me lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We have Kim here tonight, taking Michelle's place, and the other Michelle who's going to help, if she needs any help.
Will we? Always. Always. Okay, you should be working.
All right, Kim, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Viglione.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zimpiano.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Duddy.
Here.
Counselor Downs.
Negatives.
Nope. Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Goat.
Here.
Counselor Pelucia.
Pelucia.
Sorry.
Yes, here, thank you.
No, that was good.
That was close.
She did good.
Okay. Before we get started, we have a public comment at the end of the meeting. And I want to limit the time to three minutes per person. That's what the public comment. All right, let's start with the review of Police Department Building Project and Public Safety Telecommunications Project. What do we have?
I want to point out the money first or project first? I think we talked the project first and then went leading to the money discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so...
Anthony, is there anybody there from, I think, Public or Project Building Committee?
Yep. Brian is here from Silver Petricelli, Victor and Dave Palumbo are here.
Now, maybe the mayor would like to defer and have them start in terms of updating from last night.
Correct. That's what we're going to do, yep.
Okay, who wants to speak? You need to just come up to the mic because, for the TV, not for us.
Dave Palumbo, Permanent Projects, Police Commission, Communications Commission, all of the above. So last night, we decided to put a motion out and hold off until we had a discussion with you guys at the council tonight to find out the direction you want to go, our direction on a couple of items. A, the fill and gravel that's across the street, we'd like to retain that. We'd like to, you know, there's about 20 or so thousand yards there. And we are hoping to use our own resources within the community. You know, certain contractors, certain vendors that the town has used in the past to try to get a better savings and potentially put this out to rebid. So we made a motion last night to do that and really find out, you know, where you guys were at with this, but there is some concerns that I had myself, Al had, Victor had, and certainly the board, that we brought up a lot of different things. And if we put it out to rebid, you know, potentially there's going to be a savings to us, you know, we'll get these guys to hopefully move the needle in the right direction.
A savings from what, what's the basis of, starting at what point?
Well, we'd like to have, and I don't know if the town attorney, some of this has to come language from the town attorney, we'd like to know if we can buy our own materials, concrete, asphalt and all the aggregates. Can the town buy them with our resources, whether it's, you know, such as Tilcon, we use Tilcon a lot. I have a very good relationship with Tilcon, I have a very good relationship with other people. Can we use those resources and buy the aggregates, buy the asphalt, the concrete ourselves? And the other problem, the other situation is, we'd like to keep all the fill. There's about 20,000 yards of fill there, gravel that Franny wants, potentially, you know, I don't know how much he wants of it. There may be half, maybe less, but there's potential that he wants that fill and...
Well, what was going to happen with it, to begin with?
Well, Nozel, the low bidder, was going to take that fill out of there. So, we don't want that. We want the fill and we want to be able to retain that. So, there was a...
Can you just address that quickly?
Got it.
Yeah, so with regard to the fill, I don't see an issue with you retaining the fill. That is, you know, part of the project site and where you instruct that fill to be deposited. I think you're within your rights to do that. Utilizing your local resources in order to try to save money while it's laudable, I don't know how you get around your bidding ordinance. Your bidding ordinance requires that you go out for bid for this stuff. So I think there would have to be a legislative action taken in order to address or in order to accomplish what you're efforting to do, which would be an ordinance change. The ordinance requires that you go out for bid. I understand what you're trying to do and I commend it. I just, I think I'm the end of the tribe.
Yeah, so that's kind of where I wanted some guidance from the council, Vin, and certainly from yourself, because obviously, I think there's a tremendous amount of savings and if we could have bought it, obviously, I'm in the industry, so what I'm going to buy it for, for the town, or if the town buys it and I set the deal, there could be a potential huge savings there on all the aggregates, all the concrete and all the asphalt. And it was just really more of a question if it could be possible. So we wanted to, you know, make the motion last night to come in front of you guys, come in front of the, from the town attorney and the council and kind of get your opinion on that.
So Vin, how long, what's the quickest time for us to discuss and possibly change the ordinance if we wanted to move forward with that?
Well, I mean, changing of the ordinance would be a, you'd have to have a public hearing and, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to first discuss the concepts, kind of research the concepts. For the police station project, you're not, you're using your own money, so, you know, I don't believe there are any statutory prohibitions. The only prohibition that you're dealing with is your local bidding ordinance. So I suppose what we would need is language in the bidding ordinance that says the town council has the right to waive the bidding requirement when it's in the best, when it's determined it's in the best interest of the town. Something like that.
Vin, Joe Fawnin, correct me if I'm wrong. What precludes us from carving out of the overall general contractor's bid, the specific areas Dave Palumbo is addressing, and putting out to bid those specific items attributable to the project and taking bids up? I'm guessing Dave Palumbo's bid's going to be the lowest, but would that not comply with the ordinance? And then our general contractor bid would be for the balance of the work?
Yes, Joe, I believe you can do that. Yes, I believe you can do that. I don't believe, the way I was hearing it was, we weren't going to go out for bid, we were just going to say, you know, this person has...
Your points are well made. I'm just looking for a way of not reinventing the wheel, but heading to where we want to go.
Right.
And it just occurs to me that we separate items from the overall contract, we bid on those items. And Dave puts in a bid, a certain number, which I assume is going to be the best number. I'm just guessing, I'm not saying that it is. I'm not trying to set up something for anybody, but I'm guessing it's going to be the best number. And then we buy that through Dave. And to the balance of the stuff, we get it from our general contractor.
But isn't that a bit deceiving?
Who are we deceiving?
Well, what we're saying out loud is, we're going to carve out certain items to bid on ourselves, let's say, you know, Dave Palumbo, and Dave's going to be the lowest bidder. Isn't that kind of deceiving?
Well, you don't know that...
We don't know that for sure. Joe was just using that as an example.
Yeah, it might have not come out exactly, maybe Vin's not...
Hey, Vin, Tom, hang on one second, it came out wrong. So what we like to do is have, just using an example in a hypothetical situation, but Tilcon bid concrete and asphalt. Yeah, Dave bid asphalt and concrete, which he distributes to the public. And go to the public and whoever has the best numbers, sell it back to contractor because...
Now, Tilcon may be on the state bid.
They are.
I was just going to say.
They are.
They're on the state, so you don't have to go out, state contract, you don't have to go out for bid. We're allowed to...
Right, so for 84 to 11, you could just purchase direct from Tilcon.
That's what I'm saying, count out that.
Yeah.
We get the best number. I would use my influence or at least certainly my contacts, whether it's, it could be Tilcon.
But we don't have to go out to bid for it.
You wouldn't go out to bid.
So we might have to redo, we might have to collapse the original, the bid we have right now.
Correct.
We have to collapse because we're going to have to redo it.
Carve that out.
Carve out whatever you're going to carve out.
Before we do that...
So the other contractors won't be bidding on that part of it.
Correct.
Vin, is there a way that we can negotiate with the contractor to...
Value engineer?
Value engineer that without going back out to bid and use the low bidder and take all that out of his contract?
Use the low bidder.
Yeah, but you'd have to do that to all your bidders.
All 13 bidders.
To give them the opportunity.
So that's what he was saying last night, if we went with the low bidder last night, we would...
Again, the cleanest thing to do would be to collapse and start over and separate out as Joe suggested. There may be language in the bid, I'd have to take a closer look at the bid documents. Like in the MSW bid, the town put in language in the bid documents that said, basically, after it awards the bid, it has the right to further negotiate with the vendor.
Right. Say if we awarded it to Nozel, or do we have that in there to negotiate later?
Right, what you're saying, Vin, is if we award to Nozel, we can then negotiate with him and he agreed to that, but once we sign and he doesn't agree, we're locked in. That's my fear.
Yeah, and if it wasn't, if it wasn't in the original bid, then you can't.
Right.
So it's best to collapse the current one.
Correct.
And write it the way you want it, so you can carve out...
So we can carve out the things that we may want to potentially...
But understand, there's a fee that's associated with that.
Right.
So it's about 40,000 to 45,000 for the architects to redo everything, go back out to bid.
Wait a second.
Yes.
Wait a second. You have to take a look at the contracts before you jump there?
Yep.
Because you had an original, you had an original allowance budget for this. And there is language in the contract that if the bids don't come back within the contract budget, I'm trying to pull up the contract so we can look at that. There may not be an added cost to the town on that.
No, I think...
Are you talking the architect?
Yeah.
Or putting it out to bid again?
Hold on, I'm trying to pull up the document.
Because you meant the architect's contract...
Right, the architect is where...
And the specs are a different thing. And it should really go out as an RFP, because that gives you more latitude to negotiate versus a bid. A bid is you accept the number as it is. So you're better off sending it back out the next time as an RFP and that automatically allows you to do negotiations. Like they were saying, if we sign with Nozel and he decides he doesn't want to negotiate, you put out a bid, you didn't put out an RFP.
I'm sorry, say that again?
You put out a bid, you accept the bid for the number that it is.
Correct.
An RFP allows you to negotiate.
Just use the 20,000 yards. And Al made a good point and we all were listening to it, if he takes the 20,000 yards and Franny brings it across the street and we sell it for $20 a yard, that's $400,000 down the road. It's like cash sitting in a pile.
Bank of gravel.
We can't back, and Franny originally wanted it, so when the bids went out, that got included. So what had happened is one of the contractors that we interviewed last night said very nicely, he's like, "We would like to keep the gravel, it's part of our original scope, everybody knew it, the town knew it, everybody knew about it." He goes, "Yes, you could buy it back." And that's when it drew the flag and said, "Okay, hold on."
We're not going to buy our own gravel back.
We're not going to buy our own gravel back.
Yeah.
It's 400 grand, it's not 40 grand.
The cleanest is just collapse the bid.
Right.
Yeah, the other thing you're going to worry about with that too is, when he bid that, did he bid it counting on getting that money? Well, you know what I mean, did he factor that into his total price? But he's knowing that he's going to make money off of it.
He certainly was going to sell that product somewhere.
Obviously, so...
Or use it somewhere.
Obviously, even if he sold it at $10 a yard and he moved it somewhere, that's still $200,000 that he's got to play with.
I mean, there's a cost to truck it, by all means. He wasn't trucking it across the street. And for us, I mean, we still have to truck it across the street. It's still going to, there's still costs back to there. Franny probably will never be able to truck it all across the street, so we'll have to...
Well, the other thing, the other thing that came to mind, too, totally different topic, but I mean, it's what Franny's thinking, I know he's talking about leveling out that property back there for the...
That's what he wants to use a good portion of it for.
That would be fantastic.
But he doesn't have the materials.
Bank of gravel.
Right.
No, it's, it's...
It's beautiful material.
It's really good material.
So...
So Vin, is there language in there that keeps the architect and engineers from 40 to 50,000 dollar increase?
Yeah, I've looked at this last, I'm, I've just got to find the provisions.
Take your time.
Yes. So I think we should collapse the bid, I think we should carve out how we want it to be read and potentially send it back. And certainly, all those contractors probably will bid it again. And it might decide, they might start to say to themselves, they're going to sharpen their pencil even more.
Right.
Because, you know, the bid came in over what we wanted anyways.
Materials are special. Come back to reality, I'm sure you could see it in your industry.
I just think we got to, and any bit of savings that we can get, it's a hell toll of us, you know? I mean, we're way over what we thought. But I think we have no choice, as we said last week, to do it. And anything that we can save, potentially, it could go into the carport or potentially the outbuilding. You know, those aren't even in it right now and I refuse to even ask for it because we're over. But if we could save potential money, maybe there's an option there, you know?
Right.
And there's options in the plumbing, there's options in fixtures, we found out, you know, there's 90,000 in plumbing fixtures, cut them back. There's some lighting passages out there that are cheaper. There's a lot of diversified things that are out there, but we have to put it together with them. There's a cost there. We got the numbers today, it was between 40 and 50 grand. We have to count that in there.
And what's that for?
Got to redo everything, pretty much.
The architect to redo.
We want to, we want to fine tune it even more now. We want to go back, fine tune it with the architects. I don't know, Brian, do you have anything that you want to add?
Those numbers are way too far off. We got to hone them down.
You mean the cost?
Cost.
Yeah, it's a third over what the budget was.
Yeah, part of that is obviously material costs because of COVID, obviously, but...
Well, some of it, yeah.
You know, I mean, there's 28 to 35% overages on cost of material right now.
You got a million four just in the electrical. It's a million one job. There's cost stuff that they're calling for, we talked about it last night, everything running overhead. It's a monolithic pour, if anybody knows, put everything underground, cost saving. So whoever's bidding the project, if it's a smaller guy going on prevailing rate, he's going to go overhead because he's not going to comply with the underground stuff because it's fast track, moving. Somebody larger that goes in there, it's $300,000 there. Lou Fonda found about 210 in savings if we value engineer plumbing and air conditioning. So a lot of people in the Permanent Project Committee put some time into it and it's worth the risk to go back out, spend the money and maybe shave those numbers way down.
And then when these guys...
Hey, I got a question for you. It's Mike, on the collapse and rebid, did you guys discuss the timing? Did you want to go right back out or did you want to wait to see if it's stabilized and wait a few months?
No, we have to, we have to value engineer it first, get the drawings back.
Yeah.
Permanent Project Committee got to evaluate it, but we want Anthony, Finance Director, I guess 12,250,000 dollars, correct? To proceed with that, to get that moving, times of the essence for that, but we know we're going to be below it. So just put a number on it for you guys to work with.
Right, okay.
So what I was referencing is Section 6.5, and again, I need to understand a little bit more, but that section provides that any time the architect's estimate of the cost of the work exceeds the owner's budget for the cost of the work, the architect shall make appropriate recommendations to the owner to adjust the project size, quality or budget for the cost of the work, and the owner shall cooperate with the architect in making such adjustments. The next section, if the owner's budget for the cost of work at the conclusion of the construction documents managed service is exceeded by the lowest bona fide bid or negotiated proposal, the owner shall either give written approval of an increase in the budget, authorize rebidding, terminate in accordance with Section 9.5, or in consultation with the architect, revise the project scope and implement any, implement any changes.
So that's, so that's no cost?
Well, again, I'm going to need to do a deeper dive, I'm sure the architect's going to take the converse position, but, you know, I'd like to look into this a little more.
It's, basically, it's worth the risk?
It is worth the risk. I think between all of us, you know, everybody brought something to the table last night. Al, myself, Victor, Lou, Tom, you know, I just think it's, it would behoove us to collapse this bid, carve out what we want, if we can do it, and we can do what we said, and put it out to rebid at some point. You know, I mean, I think we, I think we should do it sooner than later, obviously. I don't think this project should...
No, I think we should just keep it moving along.
We should keep it moving along. Al? We kind of went over the whole concept of what we thought about...
So, so I apologize.
It's okay.
I didn't check that you guys were meeting early. So did you talk about the gravel?
Yes.
Yeah, I talked about the gravel.
So, so a question for the town attorney, did you get into talking to Gary Wall and Tilcon?
Talked to him about all of that.
So we're wondering, we're wondering if...
Concrete, asphalt.
Right, and if we could write that up as, you know, you use, you use this product, so we're going to use Tilcon concrete at X amount of dollars or equal. And then that way, if Tilcon's willing to sell us something for 25% off, we didn't choose just Tilcon, we gave the opportunity for anybody else to match that. Is, so that's something that we wanted to look at.
Right, and Til, again, because Tilcon's on the state bidding list, you could go direct to Tilcon without bidding, if you wanted to. You could also, you could specify in your bid, exactly as you stated.
Okay.
But you can do either way.
That was a big, that was a big...
I was saying, by rebidding it, you know, these guys will sharpen the pencil, we'll look at all the plumbing, we'll look at all the electrical, we'll look at all the aggregates, fine tune this with the, with the permanent projects that we're all associated with now that the board were on.
And...
Keep the project moving, but...
And actually, last night, I don't want to speak for him, but, you know, Lou Fonda had come up with a lot of, a lot of things that he thought we should change that would save money. And Lou knows his business. When we started talking about, you know, maybe we should kill this bid and go out again, he goes, you know, he said, "I would love to do that." He goes, "We're going to win." So, you know, that was one thing, you know, Victor has found some things, the gravel, and the guy kind of had the wrong answer last night.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, like, "Well, I'll sell it back to you." You know, and it's like, "Well, you don't have signed contract yet," you know? So, and I know that, did we hear from Jim Preddy?
20,000 yards.
20,000 yards.
So, that's a, that's a steep amount of material.
So, in talking with Franny, I have to talk, no one's here to, so I can say whatever I want. So, talking to Franny, he, and I don't know if Jim ran the numbers or you had the numbers, but on the site work, it's very expensive to, number one, move that much material. There is a value to it. You'd probably have to screen it and then it's, it'd be real pricey. But the site work on that side of the road is driving the cost. And so Franny and I talking today, you're like, do we move it across the street and go out and bid over there? And, you know, do we save a half a million dollars or more?
That was one of our original plans, is to be over there.
By going over there, then you don't have to do the road, you know?
The site's a lot better.
And, you know, so we figured we'd have two weeks to kind of decide how we go forward.
Yeah, if the contractors are willing to hold their bid, but they haven't said for how long, but they're certainly going to be looking at the market and looking to have a decision made soon.
I think we should just do what we said, just collapse it. So what we thought is that we would, you know, and, you know, we need your help. But we thought that we would come up with the savings that are, are probably things we think are savings.
Right.
And put them in the bid. Also putting in, and Franny didn't know that he wanted 20,000 yards.
Yeah, I think we're all a little bit shocked at that number.
That, you know, just moving 20,000 yards of material. And so this last guy was hauling it somewhere. You know, so hauling, if you can turn a truck around in 10 minutes going across the street to, you know, anywhere out of town is an hour round trip. You know, that's a, that's a big number. So based on your guys' opinion, like where we are right now and where do you, what do you think our best case scenario would be, would you move, would you move the project site? I mean, I mean, would you consider it, I guess? That's all I'm asking. I know that you're holding that answer.
That was our initial place of interest right from the get-go.
Which is where?
Would that give us a big impact?
Across the street, right across the street.
So right on the, just where he was going to move the road and stuff, just on the...
Oh, so the front half of the Poco Fest, where we parked.
Right, where you parked.
Okay.
Would there be any negatives to that?
Yeah, the biggest negative is the police station won't be secured by its surroundings that we have now. I talked to the chief about it because Franny hadn't mentioned it until the beginning. Because I had a walkthrough on the utilities for the high school, but I did just see something that I didn't have last night, but I understand why the actual bids are a little skewed. So the original bid, is it rough grading and...
Well, our estimate, so when we developed our estimate, and I hope, should I get up there a second?
Yeah.
So when we developed our estimate, sorry, Brian Cleveland, Silver Petricelli and Associates, our estimate included myself doing the takeoffs for the architectural pieces, but also having the engineers that are specific in each trade in our office develop the electrical estimate, the plumbing estimate, fire protection, et cetera. So there's a bunch of sections where we specifically provide line items for all of those different pieces of our estimate. One of the pieces was also to give, get numbers from the civil engineer who was designing that piece of the property. The line item, and I didn't even really caught, catch on to it until we just started talking about it and we looked back at those original estimates. He had left a line item in his estimate that he gave to us to include in the budget stating that rough grading of the property was to be done by the town and it was a zero dollar value. So in our estimates, it was assumed that the town would be providing the rough grading, provide a level site for the contractor, then come in and start building off of that rough graded site. So part of this whole conversation relative to that $400,000 of carting it off-site in order to get rid of all of that cut, wasn't even included in our estimate because it was assumed that the town would be doing the rough grading prior to the start of construction.
So we were moving it anyway?
Somebody was moving it.
Yep.
We didn't want to let that dirt, it's too valuable for fields, Franny's erecting some field in the back, needed it, there's some stuff he had to do in the Poco area, were you guys doing that? I mean, anything, if you're rebuilding a road somewhere, I mean, you know, then you've got the problem, you know? So...
I just think it's, it's, it would be foolish of us not to pull back a little bit, collapse this bid and let us kind of work this.
And we weren't, we, nobody was looking to delay it.
Right.
We're figuring that we've got to stay on this and be ready to go forward in, you know, no more than 68 weeks. To go across the street, the chief had, it's going to cost to block it all out and you're going to kind of block off the Poco Fest, which is, it could be a big deal.
The only concern that I always had about going across the street was that, you know, going back and forth from one side to the other.
Well, they can't conceal the prisoners from anybody seeing, the way it's designed now, the Sally Board and all that stuff is kind of closed off to the back, nobody can really get to. And they had parking for the EOTech room for all the training that they wanted to do, which was on the top platform, which could house another 40, 50 cars on the grass, which is huge.
I mean, I suppose it's a conversation we should have with him at the permanent project. project.
The only thing, the only thing I'm worried about, guys, and I, I know we're trying to save money and stuff like that, but this town doesn't have a town center, it doesn't have a town green. That's the only piece of property we have to do community events, the Poco Festival and stuff like that, and to, to take that away, I don't know.
Ron, it is the best option.
I, I don't doubt it is, but...
I mean, it doesn't say we can't do it where we are.
Yeah.
And there's still potential savings. It's just...
I think we, I think we should look at, I mean, we all seem committed to the police, I mean, we, we've already committed, but we really want the, the best we can get at the, at the most cost-effective.
That's the best dollar we can give it.
Right. So, if, I think we should, I, I, I don't know what you guys think, but in my mind, I keep thinking we should at least look at it and explore. And, and I'm not saying we're, I'm not, I'm not asking anyone or suggesting making these huge delays, but we should, absolutely should be tapping the brakes and saying, doing a complete assessment, rethinking it.
I mean, I think you guys are, are well committed, and I think you were committed tonight. It's us that wants to pull back a little bit and do our best.
Well, they got a Poco Fest deadline. If we can get the bond put aside, we know what our worst-case scenario, we just want the time, once the money's put aside, we wanna try to retract this all the way back as much as we can. If it goes across the street and the chief doesn't like it for security reasons, there's, there's things we can build back there, you know? Am I wrong? To, to block it off, but if it's that much of a savings, I'd rather have a, a functioning building than one that's constantly leaking, so, you know?
I mean, the, the other site is the, the softball field, also. I mean, that was, that was a site they looked at.
Yeah, we looked at that originally, but there were some issues with that.
Right, I mean...
Below the, the grade level.
You're gonna have to, you'd be using a lot of that fill to bring over there to, to fill it all. And, and again, then you're gonna move fields.
Then you gotta make another fill.
Right.
Well, we, yeah, but we fixed Memorial Field down, 'cause that was, that was not an operational, the one.
No, the one, it's Tucker Park, you know, that place, yeah.
No, I know, I know, but that, that's a softball, and we, we put another, we put the one back online. Memorial Field was all redone and, and all...
Is that going across the street?
Yeah, that's by the middle school.
We started with the softball field, but there were so many problems over there.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, I'm just saying, if they're looking at across the street, you know, if it's out, it's out. I mean, it's, it's...
Al, Al would remember. Al, Al, don't you remember when we looked at the softball field, there were a lot of issues over there?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
The softball field, I think we all...
We kind of all agreed it didn't work.
And, and believe it or not, you'd think it's like, gonna be easy to build, it was, it was tough.
Yeah, it was a tough... Just the grading of the land.
Because it was too flat, and it's like, okay, how do we get rid of the water?
Water, so the bottom that they're looking for is twelve million, two hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
Correct.
So, basically, we're gonna put that in the placeholder, so he can go out and do his bonding by August, what, first, you said?
The official statement's dated July seventh, so, yeah, the closing latter part of July when the money bug is paid.
So, basically, we put that aside and then let us do our due diligence and come back with some savings, even though the bond's put aside, we wanna reduce it.
It's only the authorization, not saying we're gonna bond twelve, two fifty, it's just the authorization.
But that's the worst-case scenario.
Exactly.
And so, we got a flat, so we wanna come back with this.
And, and then we found some things in both the PD and the school, we found a lot of stuff on the school, but it's only ninety-five percent drawn. We, we found that, you know, everything below the slabs were, were cast iron pipes. And, we, you know, so, we, we convinced both architects, we want plastic below the pipes, below the slabs.
Below the slabs, right.
You know, you put cast iron in, and fifty years from now, you're digging up the slab and fix the cast iron. You put plastic in, fifty years from now, it looks like a div, but they put it in. So, and, and I don't care what the engineering world thinks, or what, you know, common practices, you know, unless you're in Chicago with the, with the strong union saying, "Everything's cast iron," you know, we, we don't want it. We're living it at, at the PD now.
Right.
And, and, and in the high school, we, we decided on, like, where the water comes down through the walls and stuff from one floor to another, you know, so, and, and, and I do that in the high-end houses, you have cast iron drops. So, you got, you know, a straight pipe that's cast iron that's quiet, and as soon as you get under that slab, you go back to, go back to plastic.
There's also the utilities, I spent about two or three hours with Franny today. Kevin, the, the, from Gilvane, we had a meeting on Tuesday, I told him that I would go back there at eight o'clock in the morning on Tuesday and give him four to five hours with the power company restructure, because they left out of, I don't even wanna get into it.
Yeah, we're not, we can't talk about the high school tonight, 'cause of the special meeting.
So, it saved quite a bit of money.
Let me, let me, I gotta, I gotta say something. You guys, I, I appreciate what, what you're doing. I know you put a lot of time in. We got a great building committee. I like what you're saying. You're, you're looking out for the citizens in, in the town, keep the price down. And if, I think for the forty-five thousand that it's gonna cost us, I think that'll be saved right away. You're gonna have to come back with us, I would like to see some more numbers. So, if you, you know, you wanna do that, and let us know what you think about different things that can be changed.
So, you have a meeting in July thirteenth?
Thirteenth, yeah. And then we have, we have two in August.
We would have a better handle by the thirteenth, and then you only have one meeting in July?
One in July and two in August.
So, the, the only thing we need is to make sure that Anthony's all set for his bonding, so we told him...
Yeah, that's later on our meeting.
And the other thing I wanna be clear with is, we may come in on the thirteenth and say, "Hire this guy and we're building where we work."
Right.
And then negotiate with him.
And negotiate with that.
With, with NOS.
You know, he didn't, he, you know, I, I didn't come away with any bad feelings at all, you know, with that.
I would, I think our, our fear was just if we, if we sign, we have, and he says no, then we're stuck. So, you know, I, I think he will negotiate.
And, and he, he was firm on, he wouldn't even, we couldn't even read, like, the few things he said, "Well, if we go with you, will you do this, will you do this?" And he was like...
When he signed the contract, we'll, we'll talk.
Negotiate.
So...
But he's doing it the right way, because, because of the being a JCPenney, he cannot commit to negotiating.
Until he's under contract.
Right. So, he, he can't, but we, we...
We agree with that. We're just, we're trying to get, take his temperature a little and see if there was, where he was at, but...
We agree with you, too.
Right.
What's that?
I said, we took his...
So, that's where we're at, and that's what we wanna do, and we wanna come back with some better information with you guys in the weeks to come, and, and keep the project moving, really.
So, do we need to make a motion to collapse the bid?
Can I ask one more question?
Yep.
It's Joe Fornin. Anthony S. Zito.
Yes, sir.
We go forward with our bonding right now, and we're gonna bond X dollars attributable to the PD.
Correct.
Are we committed up until the closing to that number, or can we back off that number a couple of days before the closing, say, "Yeah, you know what, we don't want that, we're gonna take a million bucks less?"
Well, the authorization tonight is only to allow us to go up to twelve, two fifty. In this bond sale that we're doing, doing in July and August, we're selling ten million dollars of bonds, seven and a half million is going for the school, two and a half million of bonds is going for the police station. And of the forty million of notes, a portion of that'll be police, a portion of that'll be, be the high school as well. So, we're not, we're not locking in the twelve, two fifty right now as our, as our bond. It's only the authorization to go up to that number if we need to.
That's exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, Anthony, it's Mike. I, I just wanna clarify, I think I heard Rose said about a motion to collapse the bid, but I, I thought previous to that, I heard Dave or someone talk about from the Permanent Project Building Committee holding off until the thirteenth. If they go with NOS, I don't think you, you can't do, you can't do that if you're gonna collapse the bid.
No, that's a valid point, good point, Mike.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
Yeah. So, give us, give us the time...
Go ahead.
You keep it open until the thirteenth, and then we'll make a decision.
Hi, can I just be heard on one thing? Also, on that, before we know what our rights are under the contract, we shouldn't take action that might adversely affect us.
Okay, that's fine.
Gotcha.
Then, can you do your due diligence and let us know so we don't step on our feet?
I'm already typing an email to you all.
Good man, Vin.
Will you guys, by the thirteenth, I know you got a lot on your plate, and it doesn't necessarily have to be the thirteenth, I'm just curious, will you have an idea of potential savings if you did move it across the street by then, or how, or how serious are you looking into that?
Well, it was always, it was always originally on the table, but for other reasons, we went across the street, you know, the guy and I know why, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think the main saving, I think, we're, we're gonna get the savings that everything but the site work, we're gonna get if we stay where we are.
Right.
You know, we're gonna, we're gonna change the, we're gonna negotiate with the other guy, or, or...
Or carve out the bid.
Make the changes to the bid and just rebid it right where it is.
Carve out those items that we talked about.
So, so I think we, and definitely within two weeks, we can, we can get a better handle on the site number at both places.
Yeah, and I'll talk, maybe you and I, or whatever, we can talk with Franny, 'cause I've had a couple discussions, so we should kinda work with him a little bit.
We can work on that, finance work with that power.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe...
Yeah, we, we'll do the PD, you do the high school.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get on that. We'll try to have some better numbers.
Thanks for all your hard work, guys.
But, you know, I think it's, we've been bouncing this around, I, I, we have, really it's the right thing to do.
I like to thank, to thank the council, and I had a discussion with Bob last week. Here, the, the issue is, you get everybody here on the council, and all the citizens come and fill your ears in, it's stressful, and we're getting the same issues now with citizens, but they really don't, and I'm not gonna say, they really don't understand what you guys actually are doing, volunteering, and trying to manage the money. It is very hard to move, to, to deal with a hundred moving parts. I mean, we're all over the architects, the engineers, Brian's here from the PD stuff, there's a lot of moving parts. And what we're asking for, and I didn't think it was this involved, but you have a lot of different scenarios and cost savings, and metal right now, just set the, you know, schools back and everything else, four, five months. They can't, they can't get that.
So, and we can't, we can't talk about that tonight, but we do need to have a conversation, and we do need to have it with the town attorney.
And Franny.
As well. So, so, maybe we can get that on the agenda for the thirteenth, and then we can come in and talk about that, because that's...
That's why I wanted to thank you guys, citizens really need to know what you guys volunteer to do. So, Bob, you got a hearing fucking place, everybody comes in there, you must feel like your head's gonna explode by the end of the day.
Figure more stuff, you wouldn't believe it.
Well, the crazy part is, half of the people don't even know what's going on, and it's hard to get it out there, 'cause there's so many moving parts.
And these hiccups that come up, we're, we're bouncing off each other at every meeting, but, you know, and, and there's a lot of things that come up.
I'll tell you guys, there wasn't one of us that went into that meeting last night thinking that we should collapse the bid. It evolved.
Yeah.
Like, well, wait a minute, we didn't, we didn't do this, we didn't do this, we didn't do this, you know, maybe we should.
Well, that's why you guys are there, and potentially use our resources to the best interest of the town, the citizens.
There's no, there's never, it's never a bad thing to tap the break.
No.
Even if you're, even if it's only for a day.
Even, and, and we...
Get you to start thinking, and you may find you're, you're already doing the right thing, but you don't, you know, gotta relearn.
At least we're, at least if we tap the break and we come back in here and say, "Hey, you know, there's a potential savings, or there's X and Y and Z savings, or there's no savings, we've done our due diligence."
It's kinda like the saying, "Measure twice, cut once," right?
Cut once, yeah.
Al, are there a lot of roof trusses in the police station? Are there any?
There's none.
None?
Yeah.
That's all?
That's the only thing saved in the schedule.
Right, so there's no, there's no shortage of metal for that.
Right, right.
There's one thing I heard this week from a customer of mine is that supposedly, Amazon has taken up ten percent of the world's metal, ten percent.
I would say...
And if you're, and if you're building...
They did a value thing last night, seventeen and a half percent.
Yeah, seventeen and a half.
Actually set the, whatever project we're working on, since we can't talk about it, minimum back four months, which hasn't caused a impact potentially to the world.
'Cause I heard roof trusses are a year out.
We're on, we're on doing this, our fourth Amazon building, we're doing poured concrete on, hauling all the powder for it, and they're sucking up concrete, metal, and they're, and it's, it's, it's no, it's not a, it's not a joke.
Well, you know what they, uh...
Soaking up, they're coming up with, fabricating metal.
From the local shops, like your shop, fabricating, they're, we're talking about making their own roof trusses, and fabricating them, from a couple of different vendors, to see if they can actually compile it and reduce the schedule, just to save time.
We'll talk about that on the thirteenth.
Yeah. So...
All right, so, we'll just leave it in your hands, and you can come back.
So, this is gonna be just to go over to the PD?
Well, we have to, we also have to do the bond resolution, and we have to do the, finalize the trash contract. So, there are two items, basically, the police department...
You don't need us after this, thank you.
No.
Thanks for your guidance.
Thank you. No, no, thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
You folks are good work, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to express my...
You too. Hey, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to recognize Mike Paulus on that call there. We were about to, to collapse that thing. Good call, Mike.
So, do we need to talk about public safety if we're not, well, because of the...
Well, that, that project is moving along very nicely right now.
Well, I see the chief is here.
Yeah, let's listen to him. I asked him to come.
Thank you. Yeah.
Brian? No, I think you're, you're...
Well, yeah, if we increase the bond up to twelve something, we don't take any...
Could you explain, Brian? That's one I would love to hear.
All right.
Now, our conversation.
Okay, so...
Thank you, Brian.
All right, so, call the chief, so that we can... Anthony, you there?
Yes, sir.
Chief.
You moving to item three?
Chief.
Uh, we're going to...
Public safety, we're still on the public...
Uh, we're holding on, they're gonna talk about public safety for a minute. Okay.
Thanks, guys. Chief, chief, you wanna come up? We're not in a hurry or anything, we just wanna hear what you have to say.
On the public safety part of this number two item that we're on.
Yes.
Because part of our discussion at the last meeting was possibly taking some money out of the communications to go towards the police department.
Yep.
Budget.
I heard that.
And then, you know, that's why the mayor invited you to come tonight, to let us hear from you, your thoughts on that.
Sure. I, I actually thought that the chairperson of the Board of Fire Commissioners would be here. He had told me that he had a statement that he was gonna read. I don't...
That could partially be my, my fault. I didn't realize that you guys were invited. I spoke to him before the meeting. He had asked me about that, and I said, "No, I don't, I don't think you need to be here for anything." So, I might have, it might have been a breakdown communication on our part.
Okay. So, what would you like me to tell you?
I guess I would ask you, how did you feel after the last communication meeting? Do you feel things are going along?
So, Murray, that's a good starting point. So, the Communications Committee has been plugging along, just like the building of the police station, and in, in my mind, the big stumbling block for the whole communications infrastructure becomes the construction of two towers in town. So, based upon the information that we have been provided with by the town's consultant, Paul Zito from New England Radio Consultant, following the studies that were done by the state and by Motorola, they had identified that there's the need for two towers to be erected in town, one on the Northford side, and one on this side of town, One on the Northford side, and one on this side of town, in order to get the appropriate coverage throughout the town. And that would be supplemented by the, the tower site that is proposed for DOT garage at exit fifty-six in Bramford. And then also supplemented by the, the existing infrastructure that is part of the Connecticut State Police Troop F, Troop I, and possibly Troop G communication towers, uh, that basically follow the I-91, I-95 corridors. So, based upon the topography of the town, and we all know that's the biggest challenge to us, Paul Zito has said this a number of times, Scott Wright from the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, uh, Communication, Telecommunications Unit, has echoed the same thought, that we have this mountain in the center of town that really restricts our ability to communicate townwide without installing other components. So, you probably are well aware of the cost to erect those other components, being towers in town, and also the process that you have to go through to erect a tower. And then the discussion becomes, do we put a communications tower up, or do we put a cell tower up that communications will be allowed free access to for life? And a portion of real estate at the base of the tower for the radio infrastructure that goes along with that transmitter, receiver, repeater site. So, uh, so with that said, uh, we had a Communications Committee meeting last week, there was a discussion with Ray Vergatti from Homeland Towers, and it's my understanding that that's the gentleman that is already in the process of going through the, uh, the application series to construct a tower, um, in Northford. Uh, I, I can't tell you the exact location, but it's in the center of Northford. And again, some of the challenges that they're up against is that because it's a historic district, ultimately, the height of the tower, um, as it comes out of the various, um, authorities having jurisdiction, uh, becomes a challenge. Paul would like it at one level, uh, the cell providers would like it at a level, and we would like it at a certain level as well. So, that, that's a challenge that they're gonna have to address as they move forward. Uh, I, I know there's been some communication, and I know there's a meeting next week, um, with the A R X, and it's my understanding that A R X is the tower, uh, vendor of choice for the TiltCon site. So, again, uh, whether or not that's a communication tower, or a communication tower slash cell tower, um, that's up to, you know, those parties that are involved in those negotiations. But the fact remains that you need two towers in town in order to support the infrastructure that would allow Police, Fire, and Public Works to move to the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network. Uh, as part of the fire department's planning, uh, we have provided Paul Zito with our complete inventory of radio equipment needs, and how they'll be programmed, um, and I'm, I'm guessing that that is gonna allow him to come up with the expected dollar amount of what the equipment costs would be, uh, from our side. I can't say that he has done the same with Public Works or P D. One of the interesting points that you gotta keep in mind is, because of the topography, Paul Zito has explained to us that it's probably gonna be necessary to put, um, a repeater in every fire vehicle, uh, not just apparatus, but fire vehicle. Uh, those are expensive items, but what does that do for us? So, what it does for us is allow the dispatcher to be able to communicate with the field units on, uh, the fire incident channels, not the dispatch channel, because that's a given, but on the fire incident channels. So an incident channel would be a frequency that you go to after you're on site, so you free up dispatch channel. So other locations in Connecticut, um, some are using digital repeaters, uh, D V R S, uh, such as the city of Hartford, who just switched their fire department over to, uh, the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network, uh, to be able to get coverage in Hartford. So, uh, it's a costly item, uh, they're about sixteen thousand dollars each, per vehicle, uh, but it's needed because of the topography in our town. So, um, we're hoping that that information will allow Paul to come up with the, with the dollar amount. So that kind of brings us back to, you know, what happens if the total dollar amount, uh, was reduced in a communication, uh, project? Ultimately, that's, you're gonna have to look for Paul, Paul Zito, to give you that information, whether or not, uh, there's a reduced cost involved. The, the other caveat to this is you gotta look at the, the construction of the communication system. So in order to get the towers in place, in order to get the state's system onto these towers, uh, we're, we're probably looking at, um, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, maybe even eighteen months from now. So, you know, there, there's, much like the construction of the police station and school, you know, there, there's a period of time in which, you know, things could change, uh, the market value of equipment could change, so availability of equipment could change. And that's a big concern that I have, especially in, in the way of electronics, so, and that, that has not been talked about yet.
Are we on schedule?
Um.
Of any.
Yeah, I don't know what the schedule is, so that's a good question.
But, but part of the schedule is, um, the radios that we did purchase, don't they have to be operational, and I'm, I'm not sure if they are.
Yep.
Operational by a certain time, otherwise we're, you know, we're, you know, we're held accountable for the cost.
Yeah, so let me clear up something that was said. So the fire department applied for a two thousand nineteen Assistance in Firefighters Grant Program. It's a ninety-five percent federal funded, five percent local match program. Uh, the equipment was purchased off state contract, the equipment was, um, awarded to NORCOM. The items were purchased, the items are in possession of NORCOM. We had five portable radios that we tested out through programming, uh, with various programming schemes, that's the other thing that was given to Paul Zito. So, uh, the, not only the portable radios, but as he works on the mobile radio equipment, he has all the programming schemes. So, uh, I had an email with our NORCOM rep today, um, they're gonna be closed for a couple of days with the holiday, and it's expected within the next two weeks that they're gonna work on programming the seventy-nine portable radios. It, it's pretty complicated. Um, we'll get those radios, then we have training to do with our own personnel to be able to put them into place. So, so there's no doubt that we're gonna meet our period of performance to get those in place. So with regards to the town being responsible for payback, that's not true. And this is a federal grant, not a state grant.
I heard tonight, too, that we got a, that the, we got a letter from the federal government extending our timeframe out a year because of COVID, is that correct?
Uh, there was a webinar, it was on about a month ago, that was, they extended the grants out here, yeah.
So technically, even, even if we didn't have them ready for this August, we would technically have until August two thousand twenty-two now to get them up.
That's, that's correct. So every recipient of the two thousand nineteen Grant Program was given an amendment last week that automatically extends it an additional year because of COVID. That's what it was about. The other thing you gotta, the other thing you gotta keep in mind is that we were subject to a financial review. So, uh, East Haven was as well. So what does that mean? It means that they looked at all the documents with relationship to purchasing, with relationship to identifying equipment, the inventory control of equipment, uh, how you buy things, from the town's side. So, uh, I, I had to provide FEMA with a volume of documents that, uh, probably exceeded a hundred pages. Everything, uh, you know, from how the finance office works, how purchasing works, how the fire department works, the town code, um, a lot, a lot of material. Uh, and the response back from FEMA is that they found no discrepancies and weren't good gracious. East Haven had to go through the same thing for some equipment that they bought, the same result. This is a standard practice in federal grants, that you could be subject to at any time. Uh, since two thousand and five, everybody knows that we've received a lot of federal money, uh, and this is the first time that we've been subject to a financial review. So, uh, getting back to Tom's question about are we on schedule, I, I think ultimately, you know, Utopia says that we wanna have a concurrent radio communication project along with the construction of the police station, so they, they marry, uh, without problem. Paul Zito did state at our last communications meeting, which was, uh, virtual, um, that the state system could be put in with the police station in the current location. And then, as they move over, the modification made. He never relinquished any associated or added costs.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to, uh, discussion and action on amended bond resolution, having view of debt service.
You have my cover memo with a little table on it, and two, the two sheets behind it. Uh, the first one is where the bid started out, the number started out, uh, the construction of six point eight, the three hundred for the outbuilding, the one fifty for the carport, the soft cost, and it came to a total of eight one five seven five nine eight, which you could follow to my sheet. I then added the interest costs that were estimated by Mark Chapman, the issuance cost, gave us the eight five two two, we rounded it to eight five two five, and that's what the resolution that we did back in, uh, earlier in the year. The second sheet has where we ended up, uh, with nozzle of a nine five, nine nine three five construction, they've opted not to go for the hundred thousand dollar deduction, the one sixty-seven for the carport, three hundred for the building still, the soft cost now a million sixteen, gives you to eleven five eighteen three thirty-three when you don't take that hundred thousand dollar savings. Again, bring that to my table, eleven million five eighteen three thirty-three. Two fifty of interest, again, we'll come back to that in a little bit, the issuance cost up one fifteen still, and we then added the driveway work at Public Works at two fifty, gave us to twelve one thirty-three, three thirty, three thirty-three. And I juiced it up a little bit, again, because of the fact that the dollar amount we're gonna be issuing the bonds and interest and short-term notes for is a lot higher, I gave us a little more of a cushion in there. So it's bringing it to twelve, twelve million two hundred and fifty thousand for the total authorization, again, this is not a, uh, statement that we're gonna bond twelve million two fifty, uh, given the conversation last night that I heard and, and the, and the thoughts tonight, uh, there's potentially gonna be a significant savings, but this gives us the ability to issue that many bonds if we need to. And the, the official statement is dated, um, July seventh, so if our next meeting's not till July thirteenth, we really couldn't wait until then, or a special meeting, even July sixth would have been close, because it had to be, the numbers had to be changed in the official statement now for the new number and out to the market, so that when it goes up on the street on July seventh, it has the final number in that we're all on the same page. So again, this is, this is the, well, the motion in front of you basically is amending the initial motion that Robinson and Cole had, you have the documents, I believe, uh, I sent that out to you today, it was the resolution and the motion, and again, you see in the bottom, it's gonna bring it to twelve million two fifty, and allow us to bond or short-term note that amount. But again, it's only worst case scenario, we're not gonna do that, uh, depending on how things play out. As far as the debt service goes, on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar fair market value house, the impact of this increase alone is about thirty-six dollars a year, thirty-six seventy-five a year. So it's not a significant increase, again, coupled with the other, overall, overall, you know, impacts of the other ones, obviously that does add up, but the impact of just this delta tonight is about thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents per year on a three hundred and fifty thousand fair market value house.
Okay, so, we, we don't have to read this whole thing, right?
No, just the, the blurb is in there, yep, in its entirety, yep.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution amending a resolution appropriating eight million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the planning, design, construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new North Bramford police station, and authorizing the issuance of eight million five hundred and twenty-five thousand bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
That last sentence is what covers it.
Concluding with the phrase in its entirety.
Right, because that, that's where you pick up the twelve two fifty, because in, when you say the entirety of the motion, that's the whole second page that Robinson and Cole created.
Oh.
My comment to them was, where's the twelve two fifty in the motion?
Right.
And it's not, but when you say it's in the entirety, that's where you're picking up the whole thing, that's where the twelve two fifty comes in, that's section two of this motion.
Okay, okay, I, because I was like.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Why is, why are we still at eight million?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. So this, that, that covers it, this motion was written by Robinson and Cole, and this is what had to be said.
Correct.
To cover us. And I'll second that.
But the, but we're authorizing the out, twelve, twelve two fifty.
Correct, that's why that, that last sentence in its entirety picks it up on here, the twelve two fifty, yep.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond, uh, any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Kim?
Sure.
Do you want a full roll call, or, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Full roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mayor Viglioni?
Yes.
Um, Deputy Mayor Zimpano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes.
Um, Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Goode?
Yes.
Councilor Pel-.
Felicia.
Felicia.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay. Let's move on to, uh, review and approval of bid for number nine, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, general contracting services for the new North Bramford Police Department from Permanent Project Building Committee.
This we're.
On hold, no.
Yeah, this we're tabling because it went back to them.
Okay. No, I don't need a motion, we don't need a motion, do we?
No.
Okay, uh, discussion.
And maybe any questions of Vinnie?
I, I was curious what he was talking about, there was some edit at the very end, I didn't, I couldn't quite find it when I was looking online, just, what was, there was something.
Oh, no, oh, that's on number five.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
Is that what we're on, we're still on four?
Yeah, we're on four.
I'm sorry.
Just mis-tabled.
Okay.
Okay, now.
Uh, next is, uh, discussion and action on refuse, a garbage contract.
We're on the garbage contract, Vinny, do you have any, any comments?
I was just asking.
You know, the, uh, the only thing I wanted to point out was, uh, I had, uh, a difficulty understanding what the vendor's intent was with that final red line comment on the final page. So I asked them, uh, to clarify what the meaning of that addition was, and the addition that I'm referencing is, uh, in, uh, appendix H, uh, price includes bulk collection, where they added the language prices above were quoted according to the specific guidelines outlined in the email copy attached herein as appendix, uh, uh, I. And the vendor responded simply that the owners wanted, uh, to reference that the pricing was determined in accordance with the email instructions. Uh, so it did not, the addition doesn't have any meaningful impact to the terms of, um, contract.
Vinny, are there any other significant changes from our current contract that?
Uh, oh. The, uh, changes of, uh, what we, what we did in this contract is we redefined, uh, what bulky waste means. So, uh, where, uh, the former contract kind of had limitations on weight and size, uh, in order to better describe what bulky waste means, we, uh, developed a definition that provides that, uh, bulky waste is M S W composed of materials not easily containerized in a tote, such as household appliances, limbs, carpets, furnitures, mattresses, and box springs, and other large items that require special handling. Uh, and, uh, tree limbs have to be cut to four feet length, so we, this contract better defines what bulky waste is. Uh, it is a, uh, a, uh, all-in contract for the first two years, meaning that, uh, all-in really refers to the garbage collection, the, I'll call it the, the weekly garbage collection, does not include the bulky waste pickup. The, uh, bulky waste pickup is not actually included in this contract, the vendor is providing it gratuitously for the first two years. So that's another significant difference. Uh, otherwise, uh, the only other difference, uh, would be in, uh, on page seven, we reestablished the, the top pickup, so that the vendor could go on the main roads, getting at five o'clock instead of six o'clock, but the residential areas will remain six o'clock. Other than that, I'd say the contract is substantially similar to the former contract.
So what about the issue where they wanted to take out that they could combine waste, mix the town of North Bramford's waste with other waste, and the whole thing about giving us the weight that they pick up, the, the tickets?
Right, so they are obligated, they're, they'll be providing the town with, uh, uh, a, a, a report on a monthly basis that will provide you with the, uh. report on a monthly basis that will provide you with the tonnage that is collected, and the contract does not allow for mixing of, of MSW. So, they can mix what they, they can mix MSW, meaning a municipal pickup, with a household pickup, but they cannot mix anything outside of this contract with North Branford MSW.
Okay. Which is what we didn't want. Okay.
Vinny, is there anything in the contract that states, I didn't see it, but that states that they're only gonna pick up the town-issued receptacles? I had an issue this week where I, I'm doing a lot of stuff around the house, I put out multiple receptacles, they're just like the town receptacles, the style-wise anyhow, they're, you know, they're made to be picked up automatically and dumped, and they only picked up the recyclable and the brown container, they didn't pick up any of my other containers. Is there anything in the contract that addresses that?
They are obligated, so if you have two, three, or four out there, they are obligated to pick them up, provided it's just strictly MSW, that there's not any contract debris in it or anything like that.
No, it was, we ordered a bunch of stuff, it was all excess cardboard, basically.
Yeah, and they should pick it up.
And we call them, they can't.
The, the contract does not provide that MSW must be within a specific tote.
Okay. I just didn't know if that's why they did it. Thank you.
Did you speak to Johns?
I'll talk to you after. Thank you.
For, for clarification, section four of the contract provides for the contractors' obligation to provide monthly reports, and we clarify them that they will do that.
Okay.
One of the reasons we wanted that is if after two years we decide not to stick with Johns, we, we need to know what the tonnage is to send it out to bid again.
Right.
So, that was.
Right.
We had to get reports from them.
Right.
And, and the question about the mixing of MSW is section 13, paragraph C. What they wanted to do is increase their root efficiencies in the town, but the contract specifically provides collected solid waste, and any vehicle providing service under this contract should only contain solid waste collected under this contract.
Okay.
Vinny, just one last thing, you said that the bulky waste was not included in this contract, he's giving it to us gratuitously for the first two years. So, what if after the first year, if it's not in the contract, he decides that he's gonna re-mag on the, on the bulky waste? Where does that leave us?
Well, no, they, they are contractually obligated to provide bulky waste pickup for years one and two.
Okay.
So, they are under contractual obligation, however, according to the vendor, the, the pricing in the contract does not include the bulky waste pickup pricing. We, when we questioned what the price of a bulky waste pickup was annually, I believe we were given a cost of about $50,000 a year. So, if you believe what the vendor is saying, then the numbers that you see on Appendix H would be increased by approximately $50,000 if they were to charge bulky waste. But they're saying that they, they're providing it for free, they will bind themselves to provide that service within the first two years at no cost to the town, and they did that in order to keep their contract with the town.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And then it'll be up to Town Council for years three, four, five, if we're gonna provide bulky pickup for the residents, or have some type of mini transfer station, so forth. I did reach out to Jamie Cosgrove at Branford, and talked to him today about the possibility of residents going over there, so if you change out a toilet, it's not bulky week, what do I do with it? So, he is gonna do some investigation, how they could possibly help us out with that, and then if the town decides to work with Johns on the sync with property of a mini transfer station over there, how are we going to do that? You know, residents would pay per item they bring in with a set fee or something to that, so that's something to think about for years three, four, and five.
Right.
So, once I hear back from Jamie Cosgrove, I'll do a report of some sorts for you.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the refuse garbage contract with Johns Refuse in Recycling as presented.
I'll second that. Okay, motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Goode. Any, any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Kim?
Want to do the roll? The whole thing on?
Yeah, yeah. I want to hear you say Ron's name again.
I know, I can't say it. Mayor Vigliano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Okay, I think you forgot Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor is in panel?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Goode?
Yes.
Councilor? Felicia?
Yes.
I can't say it.
Pretty close, that time. Three times a charm.
All right, next we have public comment. Anthony, do you have anything, or?
I haven't been monitoring Facebook, to be honest with you.
Okay. Better check.
And he just sent me a text, and he said he never was making a statement.
There's comments, hang on.
Public comment?
Dave needs, okay, Julie Hen said, I thought it was already decided to move across the street about the police station, why change?
Okay.
Julia Hen said. Victoria Alonza says, Julie, they are trying to figure out why the ways to save money on the project, and to see if the project at a different spot might be a better option financially. Julie says, thank you, it just seems like they had hashed this out already, seems like they're all backpedaling. So, Julie says, no, savings is good. We get paid twice.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
We just have to take a vote. Who's the second?
Marie was the second.
Thank you.
You want a favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone. Very good.
All right.
Thanks, Anthony. I think that's it.